Okay.
You're good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna begin our town board work session for September 25th, just about five p.m. We are joined by Encore Media. Our associate Victoria here is gonna walk us through the communications analysis that was undertaken. And we're very excited to hear the results. And so, basically, we are also using Zoom to run this meeting. We're also broadcasting to Facebook, to YouTube, and to our own website. If you're interested in joining us on the Zoom, you can find the instructions at the top of the agenda. So, Victoria, if you want to...
There's nobody else.
There's nobody.
No, it's just me, Ogden, right now.
Yeah, so one thing solved.
Okay, sure. So, as you stated, Victoria, I'm the founder and CEO of Encore Media Agency, and I've had the pleasure of working closely with many town members and our community members to conduct an analysis and help develop effective communication strategies moving forward for the town of Manlius. Today, as John said, I'll be walking you through an analysis of the town of Manlius's communication channels and present recommendations on how we can enhance them to better serve the community based on our findings. Our agenda includes project overview, current communication channels, survey focus groups and one-on-one insights, SWOT analysis, and I'll pause for any questions, recommendations, expected outcomes, monitoring and evaluation, and then conclusion, any other additional questions, and closing remarks. So, our primary objective is to significantly enhance the communication strategy for the town of Manlius. Effective communication is the foundation of a thriving community, and our goal is to ensure that every resident is informed, engaged, and feels a strong connection to the town. By refining and optimizing the existing communication channels, we aim to create a more transparent, accessible, and responsive communication framework that meets the diverse needs of all community members. Our efforts are focused on building trust, fostering engagement, and ensuring that important information reaches every resident in a timely and effective manner. Our approach involves a comprehensive evaluation of the town of Manlius's current communication methods. We carefully examined how the town interacts with residents across various platforms and identified key areas where improvements can be made. This analysis included a deep dive into the effectiveness of the town's digital communication channels, such as website, social media platforms, and email newsletters, as well as traditional methods like local media and community events. Additionally, we assess the town's internal communication process to ensure that information is conveyed accurately and consistently across all departments. Based on this thorough assessment, we developed strategic recommendations designed to enhance both the reach and impact of the town's communication efforts. To ensure a holistic understanding of the town's communication landscape, we employed a multifaceted methodology. We conducted surveys distributed across the community to gather quantitative data on residents' communication preferences, habits, and concerns. These surveys helped us identify the most effective channels and pinpoint areas where the current strategies fall short. We also organized focus groups with a diverse cross-section of residents to gain qualitative insights into their experiences with the town's communication. These discussions provided a deeper understanding of the community's needs, expectations, perception, and preferences, revealing valuable perspectives that might not have been captured through surveys alone. Here's a brief overview of the methodology and key details. The primary focus of the focus, or primary purpose of the focus group was to collect in-depth opinions, beliefs, and attitudes of the residents regarding the town's communication methods, identify areas of satisfaction and dissatisfaction with current communication practices, and obtain actionable feedback to guide improvements in communication strategies. We made the group available and open to all residents and business owners in the town of Manlius, being sure to receive a diverse sample population and to ensure a comprehensive representation of the community as best we could. The goal of each focus group was to consist of five to ten participants to balance detail and manageability. This size allowed for rich discussions without overwhelming participants and assuring people had an opportunity to be heard. Focus groups were held in comfortable, quiet settings conducive to open discussion. We chose venues like community rooms at local libraries with minimal distractions. Refreshments were provided to create a welcoming atmosphere and encourage participation. Questions were crafted to align with our purpose and gathered information across several dimensions. Demographic information was collected through information packets that were handed out in the beginning of the focus groups and collected at the end, including age, gender, location. Behavior questions about how participants engage with current communication channels were asked. Assessments were put into place evaluating participants' awareness and understanding of communication practices. And opinion, values, feelings were explored regarding communication effectiveness. Examples of these questions included: What do you think about the town's current communication channels? How satisfied are you with the information provided through these channels? And what changes would you suggest to improve communication? A facilitator led each focus group, introducing the session, explaining the purpose, and guiding the conversation while notes were transcribed for reassessing and developing an analysis plan. Attendees signed a release agreement stating that this information will be used for analysis and strategies moving forward, but will remain confidential. Each session began with a structured activity to engage participants, which included our information packets to help participants generate thoughts and increase engagement. Examples included ranking strengths and weaknesses and describing current and ideal communication strategies. At the end of each session, notes were reviewed and expanded immediately to ensure accuracy and completeness. A report was then created to summarize findings and conclusions, focusing on the most important topics rather than the sequence of events. Key themes and insights were highlighted, with relevant quotations included to support findings. Results from findings were used to make informed recommendations for improving communication strategies. This involved addressing identified issues, accommodating diverse opinions, and integrating feedback into actionable plans for the future. By employing these methods, we ensured that the focus group provided valuable insights into the community's communication needs and preferences, guiding our recommendations for more effective strategies. In addition, we held one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders, including town officials, department heads, and community leaders. These meetings allowed us to explore the internal communication dynamic within the town's administration and identify potential bottlenecks or challenges in the information flow. Finally, we conducted data analysis leveraging metrics from the town's digital platforms, such as web traffic, social media engagement, and email subscription rates. This data-driven approach enabled us to identify trends, measure the effectiveness of current strategies, and develop targeted recommendations aimed at optimizing the town's communication efforts. Together, these methodologies provided us with a comprehensive view of the town of Manlius's communication landscape, ensuring that our recommendations are both relevant and actionable. Next slide, we're on communication channels.
Oh, you're going back, yeah.
That one right there?
Yes.
Okay. So, we reviewed the following channels currently used by the town of Manlius: website, social media, email newsletters, and text alerts via NotifyMe, local media, community events, cross-promotion, and collaboration. Here's what we found in terms of usage statistics in a brief overview. For the website, we analyzed traffic and user behavior metrics with the resources that were available to us, which we'll speak more about shortly. Our research indicated that while current engagement is notable, there are opportunities for enhancing the user experience to further boost interaction. For social media, we also examined engagement metrics on platforms like Facebook and Instagram, and saw which platforms were existing and being utilized. Metrics showed an increased reach and engagement and growth rate. However, to fully optimize our impact and ensure we effectively connect with the community, implementing our suggested strategies can significantly amplify the current region engagement. We assessed the frequency and content of the town's email communication and text alerts and their distribution tactics. We reviewed engagement and growth metrics. While there's positive traction, we found that the lack of proper category options often leads readers to ignore incoming messages if they do not receive the information they requested. This not only impacts the effectiveness of notifications, but also closes off potential touchpoints for other relevant topics of conversation. Our recommendations could substantially improve the effectiveness of notifications, broaden their reach, and ensure that users are better engaged with the information they receive. Next, we looked at the coverage and effectiveness of communications through newspapers and local media. The effectiveness and audience reach of local media channels were assessed, and by leveraging our proposed strategies, we can enhance media partnerships and improve overall outreach and coverage as we're not currently utilizing local media to the best of our ability. And lastly, but certainly not least, we analyze and collect feedback on the frequency and types of collaborations with local organizations, businesses, and villages. Our suggestions aim to enhance the effectiveness of these collaborations, leading to greater community engagement, resource sharing, and return on investment by all parties. So, now onto insights from our survey focus groups and one-on-one meetings. Key findings from our surveys and focus groups. A significant majority of residents indicated a strong preference for social media platforms and email text alerts as their primary source of information. The local paper, the Eagle Bulletin, was also noted as a reliable and convenient medium for staying informed about town updates. Participants reinforced their preference, emphasizing the need for timely and relevant updates through these channels. They expressed a desire for more dynamic and interactive communication, particularly through social media, where the town can engage with residents in real time. When it came to common issues and concerns, a reoccurring theme was the frustration with inconsistent messaging and the difficulty in accessing pertinent information. Many residents reported that they did not receive the information they requested to be alerted about through the NotifyMe system and experienced challenges in directly reaching town officials. During discussions, participants elaborated on these concerns, highlighting specific instances where information was either delayed or not communicated effectively. This inconsistency often led to confusion and a sense of being left out of important town decisions and items. As for suggestions for improvement, residents called for more transparent and proactive communication with an emphasis on enhanced engagement. They also suggested better categorization of information to ensure that they received content tailored to their interests and needs. Building on these suggestions, focus group participants advocated for the town to adopt a more strategic approach to digital communication. They recommended regular updates, the use of multimedia content, and the establishment of a feedback loop where residents could easily share their thoughts, questions, and concerns. Strengths and weaknesses of current communication. While there was acknowledgement of a strong sense of community pride, residents also pointed out the significant weakness in the town's messaging consistency and resource accessibility. These issues often led to confusion and dissatisfaction. Participants echoed these sentiments, noting that the town's current communication efforts, though often well-intentioned, lacked coherence and often resulted in mixed messages or lack of transparency. They stressed the importance of having a unified communication strategy that aligns with the town's values and goals and clearly letting residents, business owners, and even visitors know what those values and goals are. Residents expressed a clear demand for improved access to resources, more engaging content, and a better utilization of communication platforms for timely and relevant communication. Consistent messaging across all channels was also a key expectation. Participants shared thoughts and ideas for enhancing communication, such as the use of more interactive social campaigns, closer collaboration with local businesses, local chamber, enhancing outreach for those who are not on social media. They also emphasized the need for the town to be more responsive and transparent in the communications, ensuring that residents feel heard and valued. Some quotations included: "We want to know more about what's happening in our town in a timely manner." "I want to be more involved and offer my services to help assist the town with the expertise I have from my career." "It's frustrating when I receive emails that don't apply to me. There needs to be a better way to categorize and deliver information." "I've gotten no response or acknowledgement that my messages had been received. I feel ignored." Insights regarding one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders now will move over from... You can still...
Go your own way, Sam.
Yeah, you can stay on there still. But that was focus on our focus groups. Now with our key stakeholders. In addition to the surveys and the focus group, we conducted individual meetings with key stakeholders in the town of Manlius, including department heads, community leaders, and representatives from various committees, as I mentioned before. These meetings provided deep insights into the internal communication process and challenges faced by the town. Our key takeaways included the following. Stakeholders consistently recognized the need for more streamlined and efficient communication strategies within the town. They highlighted the existing communication channel's lack of coherence and consistency, which often resulted in information silos and gaps in awareness. There was a strong willingness among stakeholders to collaborate on implementing the recommended improvements. They expressed eagerness to contribute to developing a cohesive communication plan that aligns with the town's goals and transparency and community engagement. Stakeholders emphasized the critical role of communication in making residents feel informed and connected. They stressed the importance of ensuring that residents are not only aware of what is happening in the town, but also feel like their voices are heard and valued. The conversations revealed a consensus on the need to modernize the town's communication approach. Stakeholders were particularly interested in exploring how platforms could be better utilized to provide timely, relevant, and accessible information to all residents. There was also interest in training and resources to enable the effectiveness and the use of these tools, which were already implied currently, and lead to greater transparency and community trust. These insights gathered through a combination of surveys, focus groups, and one-on-one meetings have been crucial in shaping our strategic recommendations. They ensure that the proposed improvements are not only theoretically sound, but also practically aligned with the needs and realities of the town's internal operations and its commitment to foster an informed, engaged, and connected community. We'll get on to the next question. So, onto a brief overview of the SWOT analysis. So, when it comes to strengths, the community pride and desire for involvement are significant strengths, along with a passionate engagement on topics of interest and an abundance of resources within the community that's available through the town. Weaknesses: There is inconsistent messaging and branding, inadequate education on resource locations, limited reach, and low response rates. Opportunities, though, is that we can increase engagement through digital and print media, enhance partnerships and collaborations, improve resource education, streamline internal communications, and offer training sessions on communication strategies. As for threats, the largest and most detrimental potential threats include information overload, resistance to change, and potential misinformation spread. The lack of consistent and transparent communication channels increased the risk of misinformation or rumors spreading within a community. This could lead to distrust, confusion, and weakened relationships between the town administration and residents. If the town is not proactive in delivering accurate and timely information, it may struggle to control narratives or address concerns before they escalate. So, I know that was a lot. So, I'm gonna pause for a moment and just ask, up until this point, are there any questions before I dive into the recommendations?
Okay. Here it is.
I know, I'm trying to be quick. I know it's a rainy, rainy late day. All right, so diving into recommendations. Website enhancements. I mentioned before that we would dive a little deeper into this. So, due to delays in accessing necessary information which arose from insufficient familiarity with the information retrieval process, there were limitations in the data available for the website analytics portion of the report. However, we did utilize the information derived from one-on-one meetings, the focus groups, and the surveys to inform our findings. And while current engagement, as mentioned before, is notable, there are opportunities for enhancing the user experience to further boost interactions. Individuals mentioned not being able to find information they need quickly or easily, suggesting the need for more intuitive navigation structure. In phase two, we anticipate improved access to relevant data and processes regarding communications, as well as training internally, which will enhance our analysis and reporting capabilities in the next phase. User-friendly design: We designed the website with a focus on improving user experience, simplify navigation, and ensure that important information is easily accessible. Consider adding quick links to frequently accessed sections, such as calendars and notify me subscriptions. Content strategy would be implement a content strategy that ensures the website is regularly updated with relevant and timely information. Create a content calendar to manage updates and assign responsibilities to ensure consistency. Also, improve the website's search functionality to help residents quickly find the information they need. Consider adding filters or tags to organize content more effectively. When it comes to social media strategy and branding, brand guidelines are huge and very important. The suggestion would be to develop and implement brand guidelines that ensure consistent voice, tone, and visual identity across all social media platforms and any marketing or messaging platforms. This includes standardized templates for posts and departments, consistent use of hashtags, and a uniform color palette. We want the community to know that when a message is coming from the town, regardless of the platform, that they know it's from the town and what department is being referenced. Create a social media content calendar that outlines a regular posting schedule. Plan posts around key events, announcements, and community activities to maintain a steady stream of content that keeps residents informed and engaged. Also, focus on creating engaging content that resonates with the community. This can include behind-the-scenes look at town projects, highlights of local businesses, and profiles of community members. Use a mix of media types, such as images, videos, infographics, just to keep content fresh and engaging. And then also incorporate interactive features, like polls, Q&amp;A sessions, live streaming of events. I know we do this now, but incorporating more of that just to foster more two-way communication and increase resident participation. When it comes to email newsletters and notify me alerts, we recommend streamlining the dropdowns and category sections in the notify me system to make it easier for residents to subscribe to the alerts they are most interested in. Ensure that the categories are clear and distinct to avoid confusion. This will better offer personalized content options that allow residents to select the types of information they want to receive. This can be achieved by categorizing newsletters and alerts into topics, such as community events, and also categorizing it by age for the events, public safety updates, and service notices. We also want to ensure that all email newsletters and alerts are mobile-friendly with responsive design that adapts to different screen sizes. This will improve readability and increase engagement among residents who access the information on their mobile devices. We also recommend implementing analytics and A/B testing to measure the effectiveness of email campaigns. Use the data to refine the content and improve open rates, click-through rates, and overall engagement. Community engagement. Ambassador program. Establishing a community ambassador program that empowers local residents to act as a liaison between the town and the community is highly recommended. Ambassadors can help disseminate information, gather feedback, and promote town initiatives within their own neighborhoods. Local media use. We must strengthen the presence in local media by establishing regular columns or segments in newspapers and even consider radio or local TV if appropriate. This can include updates from town officials, spotlights on community events, and features on local businesses in the sense. Event communication. Improve the communication strategy surrounding community events to boost participation. This includes earlier announcements, multi-channel promotion, and post-event follow-ups to gather feedback and share highlights. Volunteer and ambassador opportunities. Create a centralized platform for residents to learn about and sign up for volunteer and ambassador opportunities. Promote these opportunities through multiple channels to increase community involvement. Lastly, collaboration and education. Ongoing collaboration. Promote ongoing collaboration between town officials, community leaders, and local organizations to ensure that communication strategies are aligned and mutually reinforcing. Conduct a thorough audit of all available resources, including digital tools, materials, and partnerships, to identify where additional support or investment may be needed. What sort of educational material is already available so that you are not reinventing the wheel and you're not just... And you are properly placing and distributing the information so that it's used effectively. And then also provide training for town officials and staff on effective communication strategies. This can include workshops or one-on-ones on digital marketing, PR, crisis communication, to ensure that all town representatives are well-equipped. Training should also include utilizing platforms like NotifyMe through civic engage training sessions to make sure the town is getting the most out of the services they already have. So, with that said, what are the expected outcomes? So, improved engagement. By implementing our recommended strategies, we anticipate a noticeable increase in reach and interaction across all communication channels. This will help ensure that more residents are informed and engaged with town activities and announcements and improve response rates more than ever before. Better information dissemination. So, our goal is to achieve clear, consistent, and transparent messaging across all platforms. This will be accomplished by refining the content delivery process, improving the categorization of information, and ensuring that residents receive the content most relevant to them. And of course, enhance community satisfaction. With these improvements, we expect to see positive feedback from residents and a measurable increase in overall satisfaction with the town's communication efforts. By addressing the current challenges and optimizing our strategies, we aim to foster a more connected and informed community. So, to achieve and maintain continued success, monitoring and evaluation is needed. How do we do this? We start with knowing our key metrics. Website traffic and engagement. Track visitor behavior and engagement to assess the effectiveness of website enhancements. Social media metrics. Monitor and compare reach, engagement, and growth rates, as well as response rates. Newsletters and notify me responses. Measure the effectiveness of email campaigns, subscription, open, and click-through rates. For collaboration, we measure this through joint initiatives and participation rate. By assessing the success of collaboration through community feedback and engagement, shared resource utilization by measuring cost-saving and benefits from shared resources. Additionally, we had feedback mechanisms, as I mentioned before. Conducting regular surveys, organizing focus groups, and continuing the one-on-one meetings for ongoing input. And we remain aware of adjustment plans by staying flexible and adapting strategies based on feedback and data analysis. So, we've analyzed the current communication strategy, identified areas for improvement, and presented actionable recommendations. You all have been so helpful and patient in participating in this. And if you know one thing about the most common practice in marketing and communications, it's to have a call to action. So, what my CTA is to all of you is just to encourage everyone to be involved and support these initiatives for a more connected and informed community. Because when it comes to communication efforts in this situation, everyone wins. So, with that said, I am opening it up to you if you have any questions. Again, I know that was a lot of information to take in. Tried to make it short and sweet. You also have the report that's available. Tried to make it short and sweet. You also have the report that's available too.
That's a really good report. I appreciate all the energy time and. A lot of time. A lot of the. Information that you provided was that probably surprised most of us. To be honest, some of the solutions that you came up with, I found to be very interesting and. Maybe unique, I guess, for like my brother here. And then I might not necessarily would have thought of the community ambassador program. I thought it was a really. Good idea to come up with. It's also. A way for various departments to be more involved as well and to hear, have their voices heard too. Um. That surprised me, that many people aren't getting the information that they requested from the notify me system. But that, that was surprising.
I will say, I am looking at it now and. For example. You know, we still have comprehensive planning on there. We have town news, town of Manly, town of Manly's recreation. And then, you know, you can choose the agendas for all the different pieces. And then, you know, I think when you get to the calendar section, that's probably something that it looks a little overwhelming.
But yeah, I mean, we're like certain choices of what you want to notify about.
Yeah. Like a calendar thing. It's like, hey, sign up, like here is a calendar, like a Google calendar, an Apple calendar you should subscribe to. It'll have all of our stuff on it. And that removes, you know, like a third of the options on there. Uh, and definitely going back and looking through to make like. For example, we do have two town news options, a notify me and a news flash. So, and I would bet that mostly, yeah, well, I would bet that. There's plenty of times where we use one of those channels, not both channels, and that's, there is nothing on here. That tells me what the difference between those two signups are for.
So, yeah, I think, I think that was one learning that we felt. There was a real opportunity to kind of clean that up, make it. More. Make it separate views basically. And then people may still get things. I mean, I think the, the one feedback about. People got information about stuff they didn't care about. You know, you can't tell what you care about.
Exactly. And that's why too, I think breaking it down and just categorizing a little bit more clearly. Um, we'll be able to get them that information that they do care about or even, you know, I mean, it could be as. Easy as just having a key explaining what each.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I definitely think you could. You're making sure of that.
Question mark or you hover over your mouse and it's also a sign that you're taking your time based on the website. It tells you what it's about when you hover over it.
Yeah. Oh yeah, just being able to break it down, um. You know, cause they end up seeing stuff that's not interesting to them and they just, after a while, just getting the same, you know, messages over and over and they just delete, delete.
Well, and look at the formatting of those emails a lot. Cause I think that's, I think a lot of what I'm hearing is that when the emails work, they work great. And people want to see a more consistent social media branding, which means. Likely. You know, working on our branding, making sure everyone's using the same templates and everything, but then also regularly posting like, hey, sign up for this, sign up for that, sign up for this. So I think that's probably one of the biggest frustrations is. You know, without fail, we'll have a public hearing where like, you sign up for the agendas and they're not. You know, and it's about getting that through and maybe that's a good way to to kick off. You know, kind of a consolidated branding approaches, you know, rec could be posting about the notify me stuff, the police could be posting about that. And I think there's a lot of ways without ever, you know, would be able to do it all in-house that we could. Enhance quite a bit of that and then simplify the, the notifying stuff.
So I want to have a conversation about the engagement, because you mentioned a couple of times. That people kind of want an answer. And none of the things that even the email, unless they have somebody's individual address. Does not. Direct them to a human to answer. Um, and. There's, there's fifty humans. And we don't, we don't want all fifty people to take time to answer.
Yeah.
But we also don't want zero people to take time to answer. So I would be interested in your experience with other places about. How do they, who, who is the designated answeree? Of random Facebook posts, you know, how, how can that be manageable?
Yep. So usually whoever, um, is in charge of doing, ideally you would like to have. In a situation like this, one person in charge of who's doing the social media posting. Um. When it comes to any sort of emails or social media posting where you are getting feedback from the public. It would be great to just have one individual where all of that information goes to. And then they can disseminate who it should go to or who should be responding accordingly. Um, that is the. Easiest and most effective way to do something like that. Um, but again, you know, real time is very, very important. If somebody's. Reaching out on social media, they want to be heard right away. Um, and again, an email too, but on social media, they expect when they send the message, um. They want to hear back from somebody right away. Um, there also are ways to have even. You know, on the. On the website, like a, a direct pop-up. Um, and that could go to just somebody's email, the one person who's in charge of. Sending out the information. Um, so there are multiple ways of managing it. But again. One person who is able to gather all the information and send it out accordingly is the most ideal situation.
I just feel real time is not realistic.
And for example, our board meetings are streaming via Zoom and on Facebook. We can't see the comments live during, during our Facebook, during our Zoom meeting or board meetings. We can see them on Zoom, but we can't see them on Facebook. They weren't busy in our meeting. During the meeting, we don't see them on Zoom either.
We, we don't have the comments turned on on Zoom. I was gonna put something in, but yeah, they're not turned on.
First, I hope we should be able to say that at our meeting.
Well, no, so we don't have a, we don't have the comments enabled.
The raise hand, yes, that we do, but the Q and A where they can type. We don't have that, because that's something that.
It used to be all those things.
Used to be, I think we turned that feature off.
Well, somebody would have to be constantly monitoring it, so it probably got turned off because we just didn't have anybody to be able to do that and take the minutes and.
We, we wanted to push people to use the raise hand function and speak. Um, also to just, you know, for an audience in the room, an audience online, you know, you want that consistency of. If you would like to share a comment with the board, you're going to speak such that you're going to be, you know, everyone.
Right, like during our public hearings, we have that, that ability for, but we can't see the comments on Facebook during our meetings. Sometimes it's king's. After the sound, that's where, that's where we're watching the whole turn again.
And sometimes Facebook doesn't even go live for three minutes. And we don't realize until a good meeting starts, so.
Yeah.
Right, so it gets, um, you can't be, can't answer the comments.
Well, and I think there could be something said about. For example, like when we're live streaming stuff, we might have a disclaimer in there that just, you know. Maybe that's part of the process is, you know, once it's live, we put a little comment that says, hey, just a heads up. I know the school board does that in, on their YouTube stream. It, it says right there, like, you're not talking to the board members, just so you're aware. And then I think it sounds more like if we post something like garbage delay or road work or something. That people are looking to kind of be able to ask for more information on that post. And then making sure there's someone here in the building who's being notified about that. And I mean. To the extent of real time, obviously, you know, you're not going to have someone in the office waiting to respond to Facebook messages.
Right.
But at least, you know, we're checking three or four times a day. We're getting required, has any feedback to those folks? And I think part of the feedback too is, you know. Depending on who's in the office, depending on what the workload is, if you message the Facebook page, you might get a response instantly, you might get a response two or three days later. Because no one's checking it. I think that's going to be a big part of this is. Really understanding what are all the platforms we have, what are. And set up expectations of if someone posts on Instagram or Facebook. You know, we have an automated message that goes to them and then we get back them in twenty-four hours, like. Trying to set up those policies and making sure that every platform we use has someone who is tied into those.
Well, I, I wonder what your opinion is about automated messages, because a lot of places, just you get the emails and I got your email. You know, at least I know, at least you know it went, went through to somebody.
Yes, and that's what I was just going to say to, to John, um, automation is going to be crucial. Um, it is very important to have, especially in this situation. People just want to know. Somebody got something, like it didn't go into the abyss, you know? Um, so to be able to say, like you were saying, within twenty-four hours, but you need to make sure that we're being held accountable and that we are really doing that. We are answering them within that twenty-four hour period. Um. It's going to be huge too, or else it's not even worth it. But the automation part is, is going to be huge in helping move this forward.
And I think too. Was that? Well, and that's the thing is it's about setting up guidelines and then making sure of all of it.
And then I think which, which stuff, social media we choose to study, you will actually.
Mike.
Yeah, isn't there a, uh. An, an application that can manage all of your social media platforms at once and streamline? The communications that are sent. And how you respond to them and is that maybe? Part of this? What we're looking to do is maybe get that application or, or look at a few. I don't know how many exist, but. I swear I had that.
Yeah, there's like Hootsuite, Sprout, Social and all of the. There's quite a few of them. Um, it really depends on again, what. Your capabilities are as far as who's going to be posting and implementing and, because there is still work involved in doing that. And when you are posting to social media. Um, you really should be focusing on the message and who you're reaching, not just post, post, post. Um, so you want to make sure that if you are posting on LinkedIn, you know, you're. The messaging is proper to the people that you're speaking to on LinkedIn versus, um, Facebook or Instagram. So there, there are platforms like that, yes, absolutely. Um, but again, it's still.
Do they form in? Because like you want a different shape for LinkedIn versus Instagram, you know, like do they do that stuff in that, in those services? Like a different sized photo and stuff like that?
Yeah, but most of the time you'd have to adjust it on your end just because they will crop it just to, and not resize, actually resize it.
But I think too, you know, to that point, just I've used some of those for, for campaigns and things and it helps. But, you know, you still, you go make the graphic, you make your copy. And you're still, you know, you put it in and you're like tagging people and you still need to, you know, make, you know. Facebook wants a rectangle, Instagram wants square, so it removes some of the difficulty. But I also think. You know, I know we use Canva quite a bit and there's templates and stuff like that for that. So there's potential to be able to come up with a tool that says, make your graphic and then the templates. You know, it generates Facebook, Instagram, all these different things. Um, so I think, um, you know, Mike looking into one of those, I think is a, is a good idea. Um. I think that one of the biggest. Points is. Going to be organizing our, in, you know, communications, who is responsible for what, what are our guy? Our response times, what's a policy, you know, so for example, you know, I, um. We've been getting a lot of feedback now that Syracuse dot com posted the Twin Ponds article. Um, and you have a lot of people that are like, I have feedback for this and it's frustrating because we've had, you know. I think we're probably about seven public hearings on that. And, um, you know, it's a question about, you know. If we're working on a project like that, like what, what justifies further communications than it's on the agenda? You know, is. You know, do we start, is there a practice of public hearings going social media? We say, hey, just a heads up, or maybe upcoming public hearings, like I think that's part of it is. I think most folks will understand how we're communicating, understand that we're getting a lot of information out, it's just inconsistent. And it's hard to access at times. Um, and luckily we did get, um, an email from our, um. Website, company Civic Plus, we do have a free redesign. It's not nearly the scale, but it. Could help us with some of the feedback that we're going to get from this.
But I think this is a good. You know, I think the, uh. The apartment complex is a good example of something that's been on the agenda for a long time. But if you. But it only got approved. Last month, or even earlier this month. So. Back in March, we put a picture of a big apartment complex on Facebook and say, hey, we're going to do this. And then everybody, you know, well, we don't know we're going to do this, we might do this. Uh, we might not do this, it might look different. Don't, don't get upset about the color of the sugars because we haven't really approved that, but here's a picture for you. You know, now everybody's like, well, you said it was green, why is it blue now? You know, and I said it was green back in March, it was, but now it's blue. And you know, what, how, then you're just lying, you know? So how do you get, how do you upfront things that are not final? And then have the, have the community say, well, it changed.
Well, I think too, it has a lot to do also with like, um. Inter, like internal communication, so being able to be transparent and open with each other and the conversations that are going on. And really being able to say, okay. At what point should we be distributing this information? So having some sort of a, um.
Marketing plan.
Say that again?
A marketing plan for strategically releasing. Parts of the project, you know, at certain times. Is probably like. Wh-what we need to do, because you know, Sarah's right, we'll, we'll all put something out and then people go crazy. It's like. When we, when you negotiate something, you don't put all your proposals out to everybody because they say. You were going for a hundred and ten percent and you came back with four. What, what's this? You know, what's this, this four percent? So, uh. Having, you know. A way to determine. What goes out at what time? Uh, or what point? During these. Um, procedures, I think it's crucial to have in like a successful. Communications plan around all these projects that we do and. Yeah, it's so frustrating for us as a board because they're like. We didn't know about this, the, the board's ramming it down our throat and we have to constantly say. We're not just checking the boxes that we're required to check. We're also going above and beyond and offering you all these other. Platforms to receive information, are you using them? And they're like, no, or I only go on Nextdoor, I only go on. Uh, Twitter, or I only go on Facebook, or I don't have any social media. Uh, I don't go on your website, how am I supposed to know? I get too many emails, so I'm not going to sign up for your automatic ones. Um. I know we're not going to make everybody happy, but there's got to be a way to engage. You know, X percent more than, than what we're hitting now, because like. What Sarah said and what John explained earlier are, are, you know, hitting the nail right on the head with. Really summarizing that to say, we go above and beyond the boxes that need to be checked and. People aren't, are still not happy or we get a lot of feedback that they didn't know. Um, and, and I, I'm. I don't like hearing the, uh, you know, that we, we, we did this sneakily when we're trying to be as transparent and communicative as possible.
I think part of it is that the public doesn't always understand the government process. So I, I had someone ask me, wait a second, I missed this, when, when did this happen? And so I don't think they necessarily know that the format is a series of public hearings. So we almost need to take a step back and say. How do we convey this in a way that someone who's not quite hooked in with? Government proceedings can get their brain wrapped around, hey, there's this thing that might go. In the shopping center. Down the road from me, like how do we distill it in more layman's language?
And. I'm so glad you said that, because that was another, that was something that was discussed, so having some sort of a government one-on-one. And that's part of the education process too, that I mentioned, um, as far as recommendations is. We do have the resources, we do have the information, the material and everything, but it's how do we organize it and make it? Easy to digest and know where it is. Um. So y-yes, that is huge and extremely important to be able to inform the community as far as how, what is the chain of command? How do things work internally? Because a lot of people don't know and it's, it's understandable.
Yeah, and the layers of government too. So I had gotten an email about what's going in on Hybert Street. So the village is actually putting in a car wash and. So it's a question of, well, who decided that and when did that happen and? You know, so it's being really clear about that decision-making process. And confusing that we built a fire department, which we didn't, so.
And, yeah.
It's complex, there's a lot of layers to it, so making that as clear as possible, I think.
Exactly, and with, you know, when it comes to posting and newsletters and putting information out there. This is all content, like this is why we need to have a content. Calendar as part of this, um, is to get these ideas down, get the messaging down. And really be able to figure out how and where we are putting all this information, um. Because yeah, that's, that's going to be another.
I like your, I, what you said, Ingrid, because I think one of your other points was around, um, collaboration and, and shared. Communication, so in. And I don't know how to do this, but that there's. The example is people know like. the example is people know like we're with the government, so we're supposed to know what the government is doing. So we should all know that Fayetteville is putting in a car wash. So when people see you in the grocery store, they think you're supposed to know about this, even though you have nothing to do in the village of Fayetteville, that you actually can answer their question. Because they, the one thing they don't wanna do is, oh, go wait until Monday and then call the village. But, um, that's not really right here.
And even to take it just one level higher, that's why I mentioned to the ambassador program. Because it's not just you, it's the community members who are, these key community members who are educated, who know what is going on, and you have a very educated community in general, but just as far as like these processes are concerned, they're out there, they're speaking, they're helping the community understand what it's all about. Um, so again, going to be very important moving forward and could help take a lot, alleviate a lot of stress on your shoulders as well.
Well, no, we've talked, like the police have the citizens academy, and it sounds like we need to basically do one for governmental operations in general.
Yeah.
Where, you know, the, as many people as we can safely fit in here, try to open it up and have it where, you know, we'll have somewhat regular meetings where we'll, you know, teach people what the difference between the town board, planning board, and zoning boards. You know, I mean, even to assessments, there's no reason that we couldn't have, you know, our community ambassadors join us where we say, hey, this is the assessment cycle. So you're gonna expect your letter here, this is the grievance process, I think, maybe.
That's, I, I really do like that, that's, that's your baby there. But I think that that, if that was the training that the, that the ambassadors got, it was available to anybody, but we would kind of target the ambassadors to come get this for sessions of whatever. And then maybe a little, you get the tour of the highway or something.
Yeah, yeah.
And then have that be where then when they get the, the official communication that we're providing to the ambassadors, that they kind of know where that fits, oh, this is a zone change, but then the project is gonna be at the planning board and they know what you need. Um, rather than just say, oh, it occurred randomly on this agenda, but then it came on this other agenda and I only signed up for one. So I never knew it came up for the other one.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Hmm, well, and too, we'll have to see if, I, I think the idea of having like, you know, an open once a month, you know, we do a, a informational presentation that's reported. And then I think too, having the people in the room that are engaged and interested to then ask the questions that we don't know need to be asked. I think that's a big piece of it, it's, you know, I could talk for forty-five minutes about, you know, the life cycle of a development, but if we don't have regular people here, being like, hey, actually, I don't know what that word means. I don't know, I don't know what Sop is, you know, like all these different things. Uh, I think that would be, um, you know, an interesting way to go about it and ideally keep it fairly light of a commitment. Like, you know, maybe even if we just looked at like whenever we have a free work session in a month, maybe we do that. You know, maybe it's gotta be on weekends if people are available, we have to find a better way to do it. But I think there could be a lot there and even just, you know, people don't, you know, it's not the kind of thing where you sign up to be an ambassador and have to come to ten of the twelve meetings. No, this is open, you're welcome to join after a certain amount of information. Maybe we have a certification program of like, you're gonna get a, a badge, you know, that you are a community ambassador and that, you know, you've learned enough to be able to go out and speak. Um, you know, intelligently about what's going on, because, you know, I think like we saw, uh, saw with that proposal up on North verdict street, you know, there was a lot of people, a lot of things back and forth, and the idea is there. You know, we had a couple of people that reached out, they asked for those specific questions. But by having someone who is like, you know, who would see, you know, the post and go, oh, maybe I'll reach out to one of the councils and find out more information so I can better answer questions. I think that would be a really interesting kind of step forward. And then also too, that would help us with like Facebook, Nextdoor, that type of stuff where, you know, I don't think it makes sense for like a town employee, like after we post to Facebook, to then go and share it in faithful community connection. You know, an area of friends, but that's kind of where you leverage the community ambassadors to like, hey, you know, you follow the page, once you see it, you know you have a group or two or, you know, a set of people.
Let's swap it over into Nextdoor as well.
Even if you just share it, yeah, I think that could be something that could really help. And then also too, now you've got these people out there that are experiencing the same thing that the board is of, well, here's the answer. And then, you know, there needs to be more education or, you know, they're gonna help us, I think, in a lot of ways better with communication.
Right, and they, or like, nobody knows what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Do you have suggestions for how to identify ambassadors?
So I feel as though it should be really, you, you should take like an innovative collaborative approach. Um, so working with the chambers, working with the schools and just being able to, you need to, again, go back to the whole branding aspect of things, so develop that messaging with the mission is behind the ambassador. Um, and what is expected of them and then what they will receive in return, um, as being this part of a member of the community. Um, so that would be very important, but it is the, the collaboration is gonna be a very big part of this. So working with these different um, organizations to be able to identify. And even, um, you know, going to different types of, uh, like complexes and stuff and seeing who in that complex, because that's another big thing too, is being able to get in front of those individuals. Uh, so focusing in on who you want to get in front of, you know, maybe even like categorizing it and then seeing who the best person would be to address, um, to address that.
So you also mentioned making the website clearer and easier to navigate. And then John, who had also referenced, um, the distinctions between the town board, the planning board, and the zoning board and making that clearer. I feel like creating visuals, um, and having it more visually friendly with using infographics and other, you know, educational kinds of visuals to help people understand that their brain wrapped around some of these pieces could potentially be helpful. So do you have any thoughts on how to implement that? Um, technologically?
Yeah, so. Um, I think that it's going to go back to the categorization and the audit of what we currently have. So being able to categorize all of that, um, and then go back to the branding aspect. So how do we brand the site to make sure that it is all on point? Um, and the messaging is consistent as well as the visual aspect of things. And then again, another part of that would be too, is the training process behind it. So seeing what, it's civic engagement, right? It's, so seeing what the website is actually capable of. Um, in the training process is going to be a huge aspect of, of that as well. So I feel like when you incorporate all of those aspects, um, you'll be able to fully, fully get the most out of, out of the website.
So Carrie, I wanna loop you in a little bit. One of the things that I think we will need to consult with them about, but there is actually thousands of things in the website already. Um, so the, you don't want a page for everything. It just becomes a bit, so figuring out how to get people, how to get the search process to get you to read, because there's, there's the whole document center. So there's a, there's a copy of everything that anybody could ever imagine wanting there already. So the, the information is private. It's finding it that is the challenge.
And going back to, to the, um, analytics, making sure that we're monitoring that frequently, um, because you want to see which pages people are following frequently. You wanna see what the bounce rate is, so are people going to this page and saying, oh my gosh, there's so much stuff on here, I'm just leaving. And like, all of this information is gonna be very important in, um, building and growing and sustaining the website down the road.
I think mine was a too, it will do so a conversation of looking at other options out there. Specifically because it begs the question of, you know, this is such, it's, there's so many things in so many places and, you know.
And sort of, oh, I'm sorry. So this level, this level of re-filing, everything that's already in there is like a, a job.
It's a, the red tape, yes.
That's not something we really wanna jump into.
No, but also too, so to be able to eventually get that and get on board with that and then keep it as a running thing that you, you, again, you're checking regularly, the analytics, but also auditing the website every, even every quarter. Um, just to make sure that everything.
I'm gonna give a concrete example because I think people are maybe losing it or whatever, but when you talk about work gets hits. On the planning development page, there's a place that says Dex right on the front, because everybody's searching for how, how this, this involves about building a deck. So instead of waiting for people to try to hit search and find it in the code, there's just a button that goes right to Dex. So those are the kinds of things, is if we know what people are looking for right on the front. So planning board, it could be right on the front and it, and it could say, you know, site plan. And you hit it and it tells you what you, what's required for a site plan. So there, those are the kinds of things that, to, to just save somebody six steps. The stuff is there, it's always been there, but it just is to make it faster to get them.
And the notify me too, so people who are able to find it, you know, they do, they love the idea of getting text and email updates, but the accessibility to it is, you know, a little difficult, but that's all, you know, hopefully stuff that is able to improve moving forward, but stuff like that you can monitor.
And yeah, the, the videos too, like if you just hit the little TV thing at the top, it shows you stuff from three years ago, like it's just random. And it's like, it doesn't, if you ask for the date, you get the date of the new one. But if you just hit the button, it doesn't really, it doesn't go directly to whatever the most recent video was. It's not good. Well, it's just, I mean, I don't know anything about the bank side of the website, so I don't, I don't even know what would matter to them.
Yeah, and that's the thing too, so it's important to make sure, you know, it, this is like a whole job itself, and you need to know the workings behind it and how it all works and how you get from point A to point B. Um, so it's like, it's nobody's fault per se about how things got, you know, like this, it's just being sure to be able to clean it up, have somebody who knows what they're doing and, you know, have some sort of a plan in process.
And I think that's what goes through my mind is thinking about bandwidth. You know, it, it is a job, which is why it hasn't. So it's how do we, how do we task someone, how do we create the bandwidth? And I would say it's important for us, because we are in a tent, to, to do this as a multi-process. Because we're already down a clerk, we're not gonna have a, take a whole clerk out of work to spend time on the website this, right now. So what are the things that are really the priority to do currently?
Yeah.
Um, and to, and to ha, and have what kind of resources necessary for those priority changes? Um, and then, and, you know, and then what are things that we agree that they're a good idea, but we, we don't have six people to work on this?
That's what I think too, like things run out of the meter, like, um, brand consistency and outlets. You know, making sure that we have an internal process for, you know, as, when someone thinks maybe we should post this on social media, there should be something you look at and says, if it is one of these things, you post it on social media. If it is not one of these things, you make a town news alert or something like that, you know?
It's also, does anybody read our, our page? You know, like, is there somebody here reading it to see if anybody's even done it?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's not my area.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, we're about five minutes over, anything else, anything like to end with?
Right, anything else?
Well, yeah, I'll just say, again, thank you all so much, you've been such a pleasure to work with. Um, I really, I, I see this being a great first step and I know it's just gonna completely just take off moving forward. Um, so if anything, you all know where to find me, um, but thank you.
And thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we've had you uh, this work session and we'll be back about twenty.